Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting of August 14th, 2014. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the good republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico with the symbol of our friendship and honor and equality.
Item three, approval of the regular meeting agenda. Is there any changes need to come on the agenda? Can you get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. There's a motion as second to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. For the whole public input next, during this portion of our meeting, you're welcome. We welcome your suggestions and we want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So if you have any public input at this time on any item that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Please, Lucy, just state your name for the record. We know who you are, but...
Hi, I'm Lucy Whitmarsh. I'm Lucy Whitmarsh and I'm representing the Silver City Main Street. And I did put flyers out, but I did just want to mention that we have two important events coming up downtown. The first one is this Saturday, which is the 16th, and it is the fourth annual bash on Broadway. And this is where Western Mexico University reaches out to the community to come and listen to the State of the University presentation, which is going to be at the university by Dr. Shepherd at 5:30. I mean, sorry, it's going to be at the Silver City Museum at 5:30 on Saturday. And then at 6:30 to, from 6:30 to 8:30, downtown on Broadway, we have a street dance and have the parents and the students there from the university. And it's really important that the community come out and support the university students and welcome them to our community and to our downtown. The second event that we have going on is called Downtown Silver City Taste of Downtown. And that's going to be on Saturday, September 6th. And we have events going on downtown all day. We have local food production information at the farmer's market, which is from 8:30 to noon. And then from 11:00 to 2:00, we're going to feature tastes from our local downtown restaurants for people to come and experience. And I know we're all about bringing businesses to our community, but we have businesses that we need to support and get out there and show them that we care about them being here. So I hope everybody that can will attend the Taste of Downtown on Saturday, September 6th on Broadway in Silver City. Thank you.
Thank you. Good information. Anybody else with public input today? Yes, please come forward.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Frank Donahue. I'm just a citizen of Silver City, Grant County. And I just have a flag to present to the county. And hopefully this flag will fly up at the Veterans Conference Center. And I will volunteer the league, the Marine Corps League, to take care of that flag. And if we're able to come by and pick up flags from this office in order to take care of those flags out there. The second part of this flag comes from Congressman Pierce's office. It was a gift. And I just asked that the county oversee those flags around the county. Because the last two I saw were, they were just, they were shameful, okay? So we will take care of the ones at the conference center, if that's okay with the county commissioners?
We will get with the manager and we will get that with you on some type of agreement.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Is this one that flew over the Capitol?
Yeah.
All right, okay. All right, so thank you very much. Thank you very much. Any other public input? Seeing none, we're going to move into our public hearing. Discussion regarding the adoption of ordinance 1406 entitled authorizing the issuance and sale of Grant County, New Mexico grocery receipts tax revenue bonds in one or more tax exempt or taxable series in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7 million. The bonds for the purposes of constructing, purchasing, furnishing, equipping, be it facilitating, making additions to or making improvements to one or more public buildings, or purchasing or improving ground relating thereto, including but not necessarily limited to acquiring and improving parking lots, or any combination of the foregoing, all within the county, providing for the form, execution, and other detail concerning the bonds. The funds pertaining thereto and for a supplemental resolution of the county establishing certain details of the bonds, providing for the payment of the cost of the issuance of the bonds, approving disclosure and other documents relating to the bonds, and ratifying the action previously taken in connection with the writ. At this time, is there anybody who would like to come forward as in the public hearing? Is that a yes, Mr. Malcom?
James Malcom, county resident, District 3. I picked up yesterday a copy from the secretary of the agenda for today's meeting. And it states on line four of what we are discussing, not to exceed $5 million. Since this was printed, and this is dated for the August 14th meeting today, it has been changed to $7 million.
It was changed to $7 million after work session, which is more than 36 hours in advance of this meeting.
Okay. And what is the rate that is going to be paid back? An amount was given in the newspaper that would cost between, I think, $3,500 and less than $4,000 annually for the indebtedness.
Yeah, I noticed that error also.
Just in the year, 350,000 to 370,000 per year annual debt.
Please.
350,000 to 370,000.
So the newspaper was lost by one digit.
I think it was probably just a typo.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Any further public input? Seeing none, we'll move to the approve or disapprove ordinance number 1406.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve ordinance number 14-06, as stated above.
As second, is a motion and a proper second to approve 1406, ordinance 1406. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Tommy, did you have anything you want to...
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Tommy Hughes, Hughes Law. First, I would like to express my appreciation for you inviting me to join your finance team and hopefully do a successful conclusion of this financing. You guys have looked at this and studied it, and you gave a very good summary and overview of the ordinance. So I really don't have much else to add. And again, thank you very much for letting me participate.
I just didn't want you to drive all the way from Albuquerque and not get to say anything, so.
Thank you.
It is a pretty drive. And thank you for coming down and thank you for all your legal expertise on this bond issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll move into minutes. Approve or disapprove, July 22nd, 2014, regular meeting minutes?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve, July 22nd, 2014, regular minutes.
Nice second. There's a motion as second to approve the July 22nd, 2014, regular meeting. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Go through the expenditure report, Linda. You had a couple of highlights at the work session. Can you go through them once again, first, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. This financial or this expenditure check report includes AP checks beginning with check number 171097, and it ends with check number 171322. It includes two payroll periods for the month of July, which is July 6th through July 19th, and July 20th through August 2nd, for a total amount of $1,532,840.23. Included in this is a check to NMAC for the workers' comp renewal policy for this fiscal year, which is a total of $223,149.
Thank you, Ms. Linda.
Thank you.
Mr. Linda, otherwise we can approve or disapprove the expenditure report.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the August 11th, 2014 expenditure report.
Second.
There's a motion as second to approve the August 11th, 2014 expenditure report.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. New business. This is approve or disapprove the proclamation declaring August 23rd, 2014 as ride for the 4H Clover Day. Denise, how's your voice?
It's good. Okay, county of that proclamation, whereas the New Mexico State University Cooperative Extension and 4H Program has been serving the community for over 100 years. And whereas the hallmarks of New Mexico State University, Grant County Cooperative Extension and 4H Program are education, Grant County outreach, and positive 4H youth development. And whereas the New Mexico State University, Grant County Cooperative Extension Service and 4H Program provides positive 4H youth development through leadership, citizenship, and personal growth. Extension outreach programming provides the Grant County community with supportive resources in agriculture, home economics, community development, and urban horticulture. And whereas 2014 marks the second annual New Mexico State University Cooperative Extension Service Ride for the 4H Clover to be held August 23rd, 2014, at 11:00 AM at the Grant County Convention Center. Whereas all Grant County residents and visitors are encouraged to attend and participate in this year's Ride for the 4H Clover Day. Now that before proclaimed by the Grant County Board of Commissioners that August 23rd, 2014 be declared as Ride for the 4H Clover Day, passed approved and signed as 14J, August 2014.
I think in the audience we have Sam. Do you want to give some words?
Good morning. For those of you who do not know me, my name's Sam Lowery. I'm the Grant County Ag and 4H Extension Agent. And I'd first off like to thank the commission for your consideration of this proclamation for the Ride for the 4H Clover this year. A little bit about the ride. It was started last year through the Mexico State University President's Office. President Gary Carruthers has partnered up with Regent, NMSU Regent Chair Mike Cheney to put together this motorcycle ride that is a fundraising opportunity and a massive show of support for the New Mexico 4H Program. We're a very strong 4H program here in Grant County. We have over 300 youth involved in our 4H programming in this county, and that continues to grow by leaps and bounds. So I'd like to invite everybody to come out and show your support for our local youth as well as the state 4H program. You have an opportunity to interact with some of the university higher-ups. President Cheney or President Carruthers and Regent Chair Cheney will be here along with all the other participants in the ride. So if you're interested in participating, go ahead and call the Grant County Extension Office, 388-1559, and we can put you in touch with the right people to get signed up. Otherwise, come out and meet and greet some of our supporters. We'll have a few youth-oriented activities set up while we're entertaining the ride. They'll stop in between 11:00 and noon, depending on how long it takes them to get through the Black Range, which is part of their ride. And we will serve the participants lunch and get to visit with them, and then they will go on through Grant County up towards Katrin County and then back around on their trip. So once again, I'd like to thank the commission as well as the community of Grant County for all of your support of our 4H youth programs.
Thank you very much. Now take a motion to approve or disapprove?
Sure, approved. Motion to approve proclamation declaring August 23rd, 2014 as Ride for 4H Clover Day.
Nice second. There's a motion as proper second to approve the proclamation declaring August 23rd, 2014 as Ride for 4H Clover Day. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Barry Allison, has already got her camera. donated to the sheriff's office from the Sixth Judicial District Attorney's Office. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the two intergovernmental vehicle vehicles donated to the sheriff's office. Second. Motion as second to approve the intergovernmental vehicle donation. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Program grant. This is a grant through Anthony's office with Gilbert.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Program grant.
Nice second. Motion as second to approve the New Mexico Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management Program grant. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove payment to Human Services Department in the amount of $2,004,269 for the period of January to June 2014 under the Soul Community Provider Program. I know we have some representatives from the hospital today that might give us a, because I actually was kind of against sending this in, so.
I did, with all the help of Mr. Chairman, very helpful in helping me figure out what was happening with the money.
Okay.
This is a transitional payment. As you all know, the Soul Community Provider Program went away as of December 31st, but the Safety Net Care Pool didn't really kick in until July 1. So this is sort of a reimbursement of a match that the Human Services Department put up some funding, got the match from the feds, and made payments to the hospital. We have actually received that payment. And they're requesting now that the counties reimburse at the rate of a 12th, which is what they agreed to, sort of.
Right. So this has nothing to do with the 12th that we're required to start sending in now?
Right.
This is for the six months previous.
Yes.
And the payment you got is for the six months previous. You're still going to get money for the 12th that we're required to send in, what, in a month or so?
Actually, this is for the first six months. The payment that we got was for the entire calendar year. So they did up front us the money for the six months from July 1st through December 31st, which is unusual.
How old are they, Mark?
7.555 million.
Okay. So you got five for the new, going 12th approximately, and then 2.5 or something for the other?
Actually, he's saying, I'm sorry, Deputy Secretary Ernest is saying that that 7.56 million is for the calendar year. So they're not differentiating.
Seeing the difference. But all that information I looked at last year when we were fighting this at the legislature, that we were only going to get about $5 million. So I'm assuming, maybe I shouldn't, that that other $2 million is for, we're paying this $204,000 for that other $2 million. So that may not be a bad deal.
It is reimbursement.
Reimbursement of match money.
Right. But can you explain that we're actually paying quite a bit less than we had previously agreed to contribute? Yes.
Right. But we've only set up...
A number of years ago, because the, because the hospital is owned by the county, we were one of the few counties where the hospital could contribute to the match. So a number of years ago, we capped the county contribution at 829,000. And so for the first six months, because this was in such a state of flux, we calculated half of that as the county's share. So the half that would be normally applicable to the second, you know, January through June would be about 414.5. So this is less than half of what, under normal circumstances, the county's portion would be.
I'm not concerned about the amount of money that we're sending up. I would have probably sent the whole match, as long as you were getting the matched money back. And I did not know until this morning that you actually had received the match money back.
And I believe the difference, at the time that we had the $5 million estimate of what we were going to get, the CMS waiver had not been finalized. They approved a very complex, lengthy application. We sent that in, and based on that application of what our actual uncompensated care is, we got the additional bump up to the seven, basically 7.6 million.
That'll help?
That'll help. Yes. And we do appreciate it because it is, it is almost a make or break.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's a lot of money.
You've heard me state over and over and over, uncompensated care is not a, is not charity to the hospital. It's care that was given out. It's just another group of people paying for that. So, all right. Any questions for Beth, Chris? No. Thank you very much, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Brian, did you have anything you wanted to add? You did. Okay, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve payment to Human Services Department in the amount of $204,269.
Second. There's a motion as second to pay the AGSD $204,269 for January to June 2014. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Thank you guys for coming and shedding some light on that. That may have gone the other way if you wouldn't have been here. Okay, approve or disapprove revision to Grant County's appeal of the Record of Decision to the Travel Management Plan on the Hula National Forest. Abby went over this at the work session. It's basically very simple grammatical, no word changes, doesn't change the intent at all.
Chairman, I'm going to approve revision through the Grant County Appeal of Record of Decision for the Travel Management Plan on the Hula National Forest.
Nice second. There's a motion as second to approve the appeal to of the Record of Decision to the Travel Management Plan on the Hula National Forest. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, discussion passes. So come on up. Can you say something? Motion's passed, but...
I have my hand up before you. You can put the badge down.
James Baldwin, District 3, county resident. I am opposed to your position, adamantly opposed to your position. The roads that I am familiar with are those that are in the vicinity of Bear Mountain and then going on the North Star Mesa Road toward Coeur d'Alene Canyon. I have seen more roads in the last 10 or 15 years developed by ATVs going across country than we've ever had before. These roads, in my opinion, are spoiling the forest. I have seen roads that have been barricaded by the Forest Service with burms of dirt several feet high. That deters perhaps a pickup truck, but not an ATV which goes over it. I think these, we need to have privacy and constraints with respect to the land of the forest. It is public land, yes, but it is not public land to be so violently desecrated with roads here, there, and everywhere. These roads create erosion problems. They create problems for just the appearance of the land in general. I do hope you will reconsider, although whether you voted on it or not, your opinions are steadfast within each and every one of you. But I do hope that you will not pursue this with the violence and the vigor that you have in the past meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove dedication of rideaway easement for the purposes of assessment districts in Wind Canyon. We went over this on Tuesday. See, may I have any questions of Abby or Anthony? You have got a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the dedication of the rideaway for easement for purposes of assessment districts in Wind Canyon Estates.
Second. There's a motion as second to approve the dedication of the rideaway easement for the purposes of the assessment district within Wind Canyon. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. So we have Sirice Ghorhava here, okay. From Southwest Council Governments is going to give us a presentation on the statewide long-range plan.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for letting me present here today. My name is Sirice Ghorhava. I'm with the Southwest Council Governments. And I'm just, I just want to announce a meeting that I'm going to be having. It's going to take place Tuesday, August 26th, 2014, from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Silver City Town Annex. And it's going to be over the statewide long-range plan. It's going to be a public meeting. And what it's about, under MAP 21, which stands for Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century, is a new federal act which requires the NMDOT to work with the different regions in developing the statewide plan, which is a plan that they're shooting for 2040. And the meeting will be just a background on what the statewide long-range plan is and what our regional working groups have come up with as far as the, what they see, what they want to see New Mexico to become and how they want it maintained in the future towards different performance goals. So I just really wanted to stress to you all and also to the public that it's really important for you all to participate in this statewide long-range plan and come to this public meeting so you can have your voices heard and see what we've come up with and either agree or disagree, or just put your comments out there. And again, it's going to be August 26th from 1:30 to 3:30 at the Silver City Town Annex.
So, Sirice, is this open to the public at the Annex?
Yes.
I don't think you're going to have enough room there.
Well, I'm trying to...
You're more welcome to use this place here if you wish.
Okay.
But, you know, I think this is something that people are really going to want to get involved in.
Well, I'm hoping so because it is really important and we do need public input.
Well, if you need a bigger place, we'd be more welcome. We'd have you here.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Sirice?
Thank you for the pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Sirice.
We'll try to make it, and I approve the government's commitment to the report.
Next item on the agenda, John Strand's going to give us an update on San Zia Southwest Transmission Project.
You want to, John? Good, thank you.
Chairman Caston, Commissioners, I want to thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief update. I know you know a lot about the Sunzia project, so I'd just like to skim through it very quickly and give you the most important updates. We prepared a presentation for you. A lot of this stuff you reviewed in the past, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, because I know you do have a lengthy agenda. We talked about the project sponsors, project summary. This is extended from a four-hundred-and-sixty-mile project to five-hundred and fifteen miles, which we would have two five-hundred-kV transmission lines. We do have a letter of intent from First Wind for approximately one-half of the available capacity on the project. During this scoping period, we studied twenty-two-hundred miles of alternative routes and had over thirty public hearings in Arizona and New Mexico during this five-year period. After studying all the alternative routes, the BLM came up with a preferred route, which is the route that we've been working on for the last year and a half. One of the major obstacles in New Mexico is getting across the northern extension area, which is not actually a part of White Sands Missile Range, but private state and BLM properties mainly maintained by private ranch owners. On page nine, you'll see a resource area showing the thermal for the solar areas of New Mexico. As you can see, especially southwestern New Mexico is very rich in solar, meaning hopefully a lot of companies will be interested in some additional generation, which brings jobs and revenues to the counties. Page ten shows a high, very high wind energy in north-central New Mexico, and that's really what prompted the interest of Sunzia to look into New Mexico and build the two five-hundred-kV lines. Remember, page eleven is very, very interesting. You see the wind resource map in New Mexico, but it also shows the wind that's available in Arizona, Utah, Nevada, and California. As you know, California has a mandate now for renewable energy, and they're not meeting that right now. And so they are definitely looking for additional renewable energy. So at the present point, that's... At present time, that's where the renewable markets are in California, Nevada, and actually Arizona, which is to the west. But most importantly, you can see that none of these states have the wind capacity, wind resource that New Mexico has. Page twelve basically looks at approvals that White Sands Missile Range had given Sunzia over the years, starting in two thousand and nine, when they gave us the route along Highway three-eighty. Since that time, we've moved it far north as possible, clearing most of their testing area in this polyp area. I think one of the most important things that we have to report is after studies of our transmission routes, Secretary Hagel, Secretary of Defense, wrote a letter which is enclosed on page fourteen indicating, you know, what their concerns were and if Sunzia would do certain things. He recommended that we move forward with this project. This is a very important milestone for us, because this area's been studied for the last year and a half. Lastly, on page fifteen, we show a project conception operation with important dates on it. And we hope to basically receive a Record of Decision from the BLM within the next few months, and with that, we'll be able to start acquiring the state and private right-of-ways. With the Record of Decision, that will grant the BLM right-of-ways. So it'll probably take us a year to year and a half to receive the right-of-ways in the permits from the state of New Mexico and the state of Arizona. And unless you have any other specific questions, I'll leave you with that.
What was the final mitigation with White Sands Missile Range that you... Sunzia had to do to get that approval?
Some of the... The final that we had to overcome, we've always have agreed to hold them harmless in any of their testing. And... But the final was to bury the line up to five miles in three different segments in three different areas. I think the longest they've asked us to bury is two and a half miles. That adds quite a considerable expense to the project, but the project's getting up to around a two-billion-dollar project at this time. And so if you take the life of the line, another fifty to a hundred million, that's what the five miles will probably cost Sunzia. But at this time, the investors are willing to work with the military, and they are willing to bury the line in the areas specified by White Sands Missile Range.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. I noticed a lot of wind coming from Texas.
I see where that's going.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to Arizona. It's on the map. But not a cold, okay? No, it's on TV. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Adam Kay. Approve or disapprove the agreement A fourteen-twenty-six, the employment contract for the county manager? Abby, you have anything to add?
No, nothing's changed since Tuesday. This is the agreement that I negotiated with Ms. Webb, and it's very similar to John's old agreement. If you have any questions about it, let me know.
Okay. We accept our motion. Motion to approve agreement A fourteen-twenty-six, the contract for the county manager. And I second. Motion is second to approve agreement number A fourteen-twenty-six. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I just want to thank Abby for her hard work and keeping her in her court base. That's great.
Mr. Chairman, I was in... For anyone that hasn't heard, it's supposed to start September eighth, just in case the public is curious.
Okay.
We're planning on starting on September...
I bet you are, too.
Aye, sure.
Okay. Approve or disapprove agreement number A fourteen-twenty-seven, Memorandum of Understanding Between the Sixth Judicial District Court of New Mexico Surveillance of Adults and Juveniles. Anything to add on that?
The agreement that I had on the agenda on Tuesday, and this is the program that we've been doing in the past. We did add the adult piece last year, kind of on a trial basis. It was successful, and the court really encourages us to continue with that, and so I recommend that we approve it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agreement A dash fourteen-dash-twenty-seven.
Second.
There's a motion is second to approve agreement A fourteen-twenty-seven. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution is approve or disapprove resolution number R fourteen-forty-three, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority for forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty dollars for the San Diego subdivision assessment district. This is where we went and borrowed the money to do the assessment district, and the residents are paying that back over time. To the motion?
Chair, motion to approve resolution R fourteen-forty-three, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority for forty-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-sixty dollars for the San Diego subdivision assessment...
Nice second.
There's a motion to approve R fourteen-forty-three. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution R fourteen-forty-four, resolution authorizing one-half of one percent cost of living adjustment for the county employees, with the exception of the sheriff's office employees, department heads, and chief deputies. This just brings all those employees up. He's at parity with everybody. Everybody gets the same color. Yes.
Yes. I had a couple... I found a couple titles in here that I'd like to change, where in the beginning I referred to the sheriff's office, and then later I said law enforcement. I'm going to change it to sheriff's office. It's a little bit...
Amended here, then.
Yes.
Should we amend it here?
Yeah. You just made the motion with the amendments.
Motion.
There's a lot of confusion between the corrections officers and sheriffs.
So the law enforcement?
If you're looking at... Yeah, the second whereas, second line, I plan to change it to sheriff's office.
Law enforcement to sheriff.
Sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office.
Then under the now therefore, in the second line of that paragraph...
Same thing.
I say law enforcement again. I maintain it to be sheriff's office. Just my oversight.
Second concurred. Okay. We don't have a motion, either. So, Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve resolution R dash fourteen-dash-forty-four, resolution authorizing one-half of the cost of living adjustments for the county employees, with the exception of the sheriff's office employees, department heads, and chief deputies. As amended?
Second.
There's a motion is second to approve R fourteen-forty-four. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. This time, I'll ask for a motion to recess the Grant County Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call to order the Grant County Indigent and Health Plan Claims Board. And the item on the agenda today is to approve or disapprove the July eleventh, two thousand fourteen indigent burial certificate for Torazza's female chapels.
Chairman, motion to approve July eleventh, two thousand fourteen indigent burial certificate of Torazza's female chapels.
I second.
There's a motion is second to approve the July eleventh, two thousand fourteen indigent burial certificate. Is there any discussion on that motion?
James Baldwin, District Three, County Resident. What is the cost of this?
It's about six hundred dollars. Six hundred dollars.
Six hundred. We're not going to disagree with that, but that's a... That's a close estimate. About six hundred dollars to fill up.
Maybe five of them for the county person. Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Health Plan Claims Board.
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five. Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of County Commissioners, and at this time, we'll stand for county reports. We'll start with Anthony. Do you have anything to say? You do? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to, again, I put copies of last year's ICIP in everyone's box. I think that we probably want to leave most of these projects on there, because regardless of their funding types, they want to be... We want DFA to realize what types of funding we're using. There are going to be some adjustments having to be made. The priority is the only thing that we need to see, to take care of. I will meet with each one of the commissioners in the next two weeks, put together a draft for the work session, make sure everyone agrees on it, and then I'll have a resolution for approval on the next meeting.
Is that a public hearing also, or are we satisfied?
We have a public hearing for the ICIP. It's not required, but we did have a public hearing, but we really didn't get any input. Of course, ask anybody who would like a project on the ICIP to contact me, and I will certainly get it on there. Anything that is going to require funding, whether it's federal funding or state funding, needs to be on the ICIP. So I... Like I said, I'll get what these commissioner... I'll get what their input is on our priority list, and then we'll have it for our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else? Any questions, Fran? All right. Chair? No comment? Okay. Steve, what do you got?
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I was an Albuquerquean. We've been working on our legislative priorities, so...
The Treasury, you told me?
The Treasury, I guess. I also... I was there yesterday.
Huh?
Had I missed you? I was there yesterday.
Was it happy?
Well, the only thing I have to report is we have parking tax division in our office last week, three days, and during that time, our initial delinquent list of three-hundred-and-seventy-eight that was... Has been reviewed by our employees, and it's whittled down to two-hundred-and-twenty-two that remain on the delinquent list, which will be certified by them, starting hopefully today, if they return today or next week, when they do return. And so they'll be moving ahead with that, is moving, and that will be certifying them for option. So I encourage everybody to come in and take care of this issue before it really becomes that, you know, problem for themselves.
So I appreciate your report. Mary? No report? Linda, are you... You tired of your report?
(laughing).
Abby? The real point? Commission?
I think I can make a comment out of some of the comments that were made earlier about the travel management plan. I mean, we've been working very hard on this. I too don't agree with people driving cross-country and causing these new roads behind every bush, and I think we all agree on that, but, you know, we want to keep our roads open for our people to utilize, especially our handicapped people that can't get out and view the forest once we chop off two-thousand-eight-hundred miles worth of road. So I really would like to make that comment. That's a lot of miles. You know, another thing we're fighting for is to get the EIS document correct. There was a lot of roads left out, and that's what we're fighting for. So I think there's a misconception by the gentleman that spoke earlier on that issue. Our main objective is to make sure the EIS is correct and hopefully to have them make a new decision and keep some of these two-thousand-eight-hundred miles worth of roads open to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did not appeal, having not no cross country vehicles at all. That was not the appeal. Commissioner? Thank you. I don't believe I have anything today either, so at this time, we'll take a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.